Of Grimes County, Texas, Wednesday, October 7th, 2020, 9:00 a.m. We are at the Grimes County Annex Building at 114 West Buffington Avenue, Anderson, Texas. At this time, we will call the meeting to order. Let us stand for an invocation from our own Commissioner Dobianski.
Let us pray. Thank you, Lord, for this day. We thank you for the employees that we have in this great county of Grimes. Guide us as we make our decisions this morning. And please allow our President and all who have contracted COVID to make a full recovery. Protect our troops wherever they are deployed throughout the world. In this, we pray in Jesus' name, our Lord and Savior. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the United States flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Texas flag.
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. We are now up to our public comments. While we look forward to hearing from the citizens of Grimes County. If you wish to share any thoughts or concerns during the public comment portion of the meeting, you must sign in with our county clerk. And we ask that you limit those comments to two minutes, please. Did we have anyone signing in this morning? Okay. Do we have any comments from the court this morning?
I do have an announcement. We have a blood drive at St. Mary's Catholic Church Sunday from 8:00 to 1:00. And we will be serving breakfast here.
Are there any other comments at this time? If not, we'll move forward with Consent Agenda Items 3, 4, 5, 6. And also, we will also be approving the Road and Bridge Report at this time. Are there any? No Road and Bridge? Are there any questions or concerns with Consent Agenda Items?
There are no questions. I make a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items 3, 4, 5, and 6.
Second.
We have a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items 3, 4, 5, and 6. All of those in favor say a "aye."
Aye.
Is there? I'm sorry, I should have asked, was there any discussion? Any opposed? All right. Then we'll move forward with item number 7. Consider and recognize the following employees for their years of service. Commissioner David Dobianski. We have with us today Ms. Sherri Barrett, 25 years of service. Outstanding.
It's my pleasure this morning to present you with this flag for 25 years of service. For Grimes County. And then we'll get some pictures of us.
Outstanding. Thank you for your service. You're welcome.
Thank you, Sherri.
All right. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number 8. Grimes County Building Maintenance Manager, Al Peeler. Is he available this morning? Is Al in the hallway? If not, we'll move forward and come back to that item if he shows up this morning. Item Number 9. Grimes County Elections Administrator, Lucy Yubera. Did you get an opportunity?
Commissioners, I did look at it. What she's provided is essentially a summary of what the grant could provide. It says a minimum of $5,000, but it gives a discussion of how they will determine what the amount will be. The Agenda Item says approve the application and the possible acceptance. I don't know where Lucy is in the application process. If you feel comfortable taking action to authorize her to file an application, that would be fine with me. But the thing that is attached is a summary and it's not the application itself.
Okay. Did you get a chance to speak with her? And she was good with us approving?
Yes.
The summary and the application?
Yes.
So if the other commissioners, we could move forward with this item. If there's any issue, we could come back to it. But I've reviewed the attachments and I'm sure you all have too. So if you don't, this, it had a deadline of October 1st, and that's my concern. So if you all don't have any issue with going ahead and approving the application and possible acceptance of elections, supported related grants for Center for Tech and Civil Life, Civic Life, then I would say we move forward with it.
It's a motion.
Okay, that was a motion.
I second the motion.
All right. Okay, we have a motion. And it's, I mean, I made a motion and it's been seconded. All of those in favor?
Can I?
Go ahead. Yes, I'm sorry. Any discussion?
Is this gonna have, does anybody know, will this have any impact on the current COVID funds that we're receiving now from a different source?
No, it will not. It's, this is, she's using, she's looking into using this for staffing for the elections, for early voting and Election Day. And so it won't, it won't be double dipping, so to speak, if that's what you're asking.
All right. If there are no more issues or discussions, I see we move forward with the motion that was put on the table. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. All right. Item Number 10. We're gonna move forward with item Number 10. Our PC Tech, Mr. Andrew Duncan. Consider and take action to approve the annual cybersecurity course enrollment for Grimes County elected officials and employees as required under the state law, Texas Government Code 2054.5191, and authorize the county judge as signature, as signatory. See Attachment Number 10. All right, Mr. Andrew.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm here today just to get your approval for enrollment in the tech cybersecurity course. They offer it for free and it is, it doesn't meet all of their standards for their cybersecurity awareness, which is now required by state law after the recent hacking of certain county government agencies.
So this will be annual mandated training?
Yes, ma'am. We will have to, as my knowledge, we'll have to reapply every year and let them know that we are interested in taking or being enrolled in their course from this. I just said to have Commissioners' Court approve. And I will correspond with them with the correct information for all the employees and they will send out another link, just like we did last year. It is a little bit sooner than last year. Just because I guess now that they realize this is a thing that they want to continue to do, they're more on top of it because it's all ready as opposed to them having to make the course.
And all employees will have to?
Anyone with computer access will have to.
And it was very informative. So with the way technology changes, I think that's what they're trying to keep us on top of.
And the biggest thing is for the approval for participation in their program. There are other programs out there. Y'all may have received different stuff from different companies saying that they put on cybersecurity courses. Most of those you have to pay for. This one is free. And since it's provided from the state, it's 100% what the state requires.
All right.
So there's no downside to normal there.
Free sounds good. And we know that it's coming from our association. So it sounds like a winner to me.
Will you, will you be tracking the participation like you did in the past?
Yes, sir. As soon as we're enrolled, he said, once he receives all the signed forms, it'll take one to two weeks to get everyone enrolled in the class. They'll receive an automated email. Once I receive my automated email, I'll send out another email just stating, hey, this is what this is. Don't be scared to open it and do it. And from there, I can check completion. I can even check if anybody's ever even opened it. I can see if they just ignored the email or...
So we have more than six months to get it done?
Yes, ma'am.
More than six months.
Any other questions?
I don't have any. Are there any further questions?
I move to approve the annual cybersecurity course enrollment for Grimes County.
Second.
And authorize judge, county judge as signatory.
All right. We have a motion on the floor for item Number 10. Is there, are there any further concerns or discussions? If not, all of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you, Mr. Duncan.
Thank you, Commissioner.
We're now up to item Number 11. Consider and take action to approve the agreement between Grimes County and Iowa ISD to provide, to provide and manage the School Resource Officer Program and authorize the county judge as signatory. See Item Number, Attachment Number 11. Don't let me forget that you're here now. I'll go back to you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is the interlocal agreement that we have with all the ISD school, with the school officer, resource officer at their school. We just recently signed an agreement. It's a saving agreement between all these three schools. And we're expecting to get Andersons in next year. So we're bringing that back off some of the town. But this will be for Iowa, for this current school year.
So this is for our annual renewal? This is annual renewal?
Yes, it's an annual agreement.
All right. I have no concern with it.
I move to approve the agreement between Grimes County and Iowa ISD to provide, to provide and manage this School Resource Officer Program and authorize county judge as signatory.
I second it. All right. We have a motion on the floor to approve the interlocal agreement with Grimes County and Iowa ISD for the School Resource Officer Program. Is there any discussions? Any further discussion? If not, all of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you, Chief Green. Now we'll go back to item Number 8. From an update on ongoing projects. Grimes County Courthouse, Grimes County Jail, Grimes County Justice Center. From our own building maintenance supervisor, Mr. Al Peeler.
My apologies, Commissioners. I was on the phone with Waller County. We're trying to get a meeting set up with them to look at their new jail so I could see the systems they're putting in. Maybe I can retrofit that in our new jail. That just took overtime. The, we'll start with the county, the historical commission, or historical courthouse. We're three quarters done painting. We will start, we will start stairs and handrails probably the end of this week, moving in forward to the next weekend. We're doing them on weekends just so that we don't have any confusion that there's wet paint or wet stain. But that's progressing very well. Is there any questions about that? The historical courthouse? If not, I'll move on to the jail. The jail has, we've started to do a variable fan drive on one unit. We scheduled everything. We got our unit in and forgot we didn't have a controller. Didn't know that the controller that we needed wasn't gonna adapt, so we're waiting on that. Then we'll take that and we'll take a small piece of the admin section to see if I can control the humidity that way on that. We are gonna, we are gonna have to not necessarily, we're gonna have to wipe down, not reclaim when we get back from, when the state eases up on the jail and lets us continue the molder mediation. Besides that, it's coming along. There's, we got a lot of problems at the jail. We're gonna address them one at a time. Any questions on the jail?
No.
Justice Center. Justice Center's coming along good. I was over there yesterday and the day before. We are starting to stud law in. We have the main corridor studded in now. We're, will be, will be totally roofed. If not by Friday, will be by Monday to have a, it'll be totally roofed in. We'll start dirt, dirt work on the outside, start forming that, getting it ready for some prep for electrical coming in next week. Besides that, everything's going good over there. We're right on schedule for the things we're doing. We got 71 rain or mud days right now. So projected right now is May, final acceptance of the building. So now, can we gain some headway? Maybe. If we can get going and inside, it doesn't look like everything's, there's a lot going on, but you gotta get into the heart of the beast and that's where it's happening now. So the big construction is up. Now we just, now we're just doing inside. So everything's going well on that. I will be bringing you some things to discuss. Probably next Commissioners' Court about the COVID stuff, the UV lights, the hand sanitizer, that stuff we need to discuss. And then November-ish timeframe, December 1st of December, we'll be bringing you furniture stuff.
Thank you very much, Mr. Peeler.
Okay.
Thank you. We'll now move on to item Number 12. With our Grimes County Human Resource Director, Talia Coleman. Consider and take action to approve the updated Grimes County salary structure and grade definition. See Attachment Number 12, please.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
So over the past several months, there's been some approved changes within the grade structure. So what I did was went back and made sure that what all was approved was moved and adjusted. I'll send it out to you all because some of these were done pre my time. So hopefully you all had a chance to look over and see to make sure that the changes that were made, that I got them all. The ones that I'm aware of was grade level five. There were some changes with adding the processing of district and county court records, which moved some employees into the different pay grade level. And we also moved the building maintenance custodial mechanical position, which used to be a grade three, down to a grade five. There was a move for the Assistant Chief Deputy to a grade six, was a grade five. We also moved the second assistant, which was a grade six, to a grade seven. And the first assistant was a grade seven and we moved to a grade eight. And then the last one that I'm aware of is we just did recently, which was moving the Maintenance Community Service Coordinator from Department Head One to Department Head Two.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Coleman, for bringing us all up to speed and all of the different changes. I know there was a lot to catch up with on your part and we appreciate your hard work in on the matter.
Thank you.
If there are no questions, I make a motion to approve the updated Grimes County salary structure and grade definition.
Second.
All right. We have a motion to approve the updated Grimes County salary structure and grade definitions. Is there any more discussion? If not, all of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you so much, Ms. Coleman.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item Number 13. Consider and take action to appoint Alec Pointer to the Emergency Services District. Commissioner Precedent Chad Mallett, you have the floor.
This is to fill a vacant position on the, as a commissioner, as a commissioner on the Emergency Services District in the Iowa area. They oversee, I guess, funding that distributed to Emergency Services, Police and Fire Department, the Helipad, and different things. Just goes.
So this is for the Iowa ISD?
Yes.
Okay. Board, okay.
If there are no questions or comments, I'll move to appoint Alec Pointer to the, as a commissioner on the Emergency Services District.
Second.
All right. We have a motion to appoint Alec Pointer to the Emergency Services District Board. Is there any more discussion? If not, all of those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Thank you. We'll move on to item Number 14. Road and Bridge Engineer, Harry Walker. Consider and take action to approve replat of lots 256 and 257R of King Oaks, Section 2. Gwen Morrison, survey A-326, located in Precedent One. See Attachment Number 14. And we have a larger plat from earlier. It's the same plat, right?
Yes.
Yes. The, again, we recommend an approval of the replat as submitted. There were no comments of the public here.
All right. Then, would you like to move on?
Yeah, I move to approve the replat of lots 256 and 257R in King Oaks, Section 2, as presented.
I second. We have a motion by Commissioner Mallett and a second by Commissioner Walker to approve the replat of lots in King Oaks, Section 2. And is there any more discussion? If not, all of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We'll move right along. And I forgot to note that Commissioner Fow is at a convention. And we missed his presence this morning. But I will move on with the Item Number 15 to discuss and take actions on items related to the Coronavirus Relief Fund. Do we have anybody representing?
I haven't, she, I just texted her. So she should be on her way down.
All right. I've been in contact with Ms. Mary Jane Johnson. And we're appreciative of her hard work and dedication. She's been working really hard on this Corona Relief Fund. I mean, she gets a lot of questions and I appreciate the answers that we're getting back from her. We've been fortunate to assist the local school districts. I'm hearing some really good things, heard some positive things from the nursing homes as I reached out to them this week to check on their status. And I was pleasantly surprised to hear that Grimes County's been doing a really good job of making sure we have PPE gear there and that things are moving smoothly with our senior citizens here in the Grimes County, making sure they're protected. I know that I had a few questions about public buildings on the Corona Relief Act. We do have the ability to help with public facilities, keeping them sanitized. So I did put some questions to her and she has got answers for us in writing, which is a good thing. So she willing to update us. If it's gonna be a few more minutes, we could go on to the next item, which is what I'll do right now until we...
I have something I'm gonna say related to that. I was at a store the other day and there was an elderly gentleman came out of the store with a mask on. He took the mask off and gave it to another gentleman sitting in the truck. He went in the store. They're sharing masks out there. So I happened to have some masks in the truck, so I gave him a handful, the guy that was in the truck. We need to get those masks out to the people in the community if they need them. If we can pay for them, you know, with this. And I think it would be feasible to pay for them and just give them to the citizens who are actually reusing masks. And the mask he was wearing didn't look really well either. I mean, you know, that's what's happening out there. So we need to, need to get them out.
Yes. I think that we've done a good effort and I think if we stay the course, it's gonna be vital for us to, you know, like you said, make sure that our citizens are covered with being, having the ability to have free masks. We do have free masks. Please call your emergency services director, Mr. David Lilly, and I'm sure he would be more than glad to help our local businesses. Because many of them, when you walk in, you can receive a mask at the door. So maybe if we find out what business it is, we can take masks over to that business. So don't fail to give us a call if you are a local business that you need masks. We do have masks available so that our citizens are not reusing the same mask. I think Ms. Johnson is here now? All right. Awesome.
Can I make a comment while she's approaching? I did get an email this morning about, there's gonna be, and this, the information that I've heard through the media and elsewhere says that a flu shot is probably recommended, especially this year. And I received an email this morning that the Grimes County Hospital is gonna have a drive-through health fair and flu shot clinic. Free flu shots given to the first 100 people. No shots will be given to children under four. No high dose vaccines available. And there will be free giveaways to everyone receiving a vaccine. So I'm gonna spread that around. And the date on that is October 27th, from 10:00 to 2:00.
October 27th, 10:00 to 2:00.
And where is this at?
Grimes St. Joseph Hospital.
Okay. In Navasota?
Yes, ma'am.
Free flu shots at Grimes St. Joseph Hospital, October 27th. All right. Ms. Johnson, we were just applauding your efforts in trying to keep us up to date and making sure we're following the criteria that's been set forth according to this grant. Can you update us where we are now?
So in front of you is the color of our fleet. We are, to date, we've spent in county-related projects and expenditures right at $131,200. We're pretty much within the guidelines of the 75, 25 split. We're a tad bit over, but I'm, once we get through all the other proposed expenditures, we're still in line. So again, to date, 131, 200. Proposed expenditures is the bottom section. We have a couple of big ticket items that are on order, still waiting to come in for maintenance and cleaning equipment. I've added a few things that I know will be coming down the pike. We've contracted with A1 Cleaning Service for the Sheriff's Department. So I added that for the, we've already paid, or October is in the pipeline. And then we have two more months to pay that will be covered by the grant. So I've added that. That was an update to the worksheet. Then we get into the expenditures for the, or the reimbursements to the schools. Over the last couple of weeks, we've received some additional requests. One of the projects that they're looking at, a couple of the school districts are looking at putting in filtration systems and some of the air conditioning systems on the bus to mitigate the spread of germs. So those are kind of the two big ticket items. Navasota and, which one was it? Anderson, or were the two school districts, I believe, that were looking at that? Hold on. It may not have been Anderson. I think it was Iowa. Definitely Anderson. I'm sorry, definitely Navasota. Navasota's come in with quite a bit of reimbursement. They've done a great job of going back through their invoices, seeing what they had already paid for that qualified, and then sending me the documentation. I'm just waiting on a few more pieces of backup documentation before I can send that one up to TEDOM. I got an update on the fiber optic. I don't know if y'all have been updated on that?
No, ma'am.
Okay. So I reached out to BB Cog this week just to kind of see where we are on that because that's a bit of exposure for the county and I just kind of wanted to make sure that we were getting that in under the time limitation. And basically, this is what they said. Conduit is, this was as of yesterday. Conduit is installed to some of the locations of Beat Ice and the crews are back out in Beat Ice today. The permits have been approved and construction is expected to start next week at the precinct office in Navasota. The plan is to be done by November 30th in order to have enough time to receive all the invoices before December 15th. And why I reached out to them was last Friday, we got updated guidance from TEDOM and they have moved the deadline up. So we thought we could spend through December 30th. That is not the case. They want all invoices in by December 15th. So that means if we're ordering equipment or supplies, it has to be on our site, invoiced and paid for and into the TEDOM system by December 15th. All projects have to be done, invoiced and paid for by December 15th. So threw a little wrench into our plans. So everyone just needs to kind of pick up the pace and get moving on everything. Having said that, I would like for y'all to consider, I know right now y'all are only meeting December on the 1st and 3rd, which would mean December 2nd and 16th. I feel like we're going to be at the wire and we're going to need approval, at least check approval, however y'all want to do that. I know there will be stuff on the December 9th week that will need to be processed in order to be compliant with this grant. So however y'all want to do that, we definitely got to have a check run on December 9th.
We'll set up a special meeting.
Yes.
Because I just know things are going to be coming in that way.
Sure. We want to be able to meet.
Especially since we just lost two weeks.
Definitely want to meet.
Change the rules, got to speed everything up, so if y'all could help out on that compliance piece, that would be great.
All right. And you had some more good news for us as far as the voting equipment, right?
Well, if you'll look on that worksheet, if everything happens like we are hoping, if we can make all the proposed sections work, then yes, that voting equipment number grows. And that's kind of how that's supposed to work. The more that we do in those categories, 1, 2, 3, the higher that number's going to come up. And so I think we're there. We may even be a little bit over. They've loosened the restrictions on what's going to be eligible to be reimbursed in terms of personnel. So we've got in there 72,000. I think that's highly underestimated. So if we can get that number up a little bit more, the voting equipment will go up as well. So I was just reading some more guidance on that today. Reaching, I'm going to reach out. We got a new advisor from TEDOM. So I'm going to ask him if he could send me an example. Originally, there was a lot of, they only wanted to reimburse for like public safety over time. Because remember, some of the requirements is it couldn't be budgeted. Well, our law enforcement is budgeted. So it kind of knocked that out in the beginning. But now the guidance is saying, I think we're going to let all law enforcement. So I want to really know what all law enforcement means. Does it mean jailers? Does it just mean, you know, deputies, patrol deputies? So I need a little more guidance on that, but that could be a big number for us. They're now going to allow like my time, which has been a significant portion of my weeks. So that'll be a nice number as well, David Lilly's. So we're going to get up and over that payroll number.
And we've met the threshold, the 75% threshold in 1, 2, and 3.
It's not, it's not on threshold. But remember, it's, when you're all said and done, you got to just look at your total expenditures. Did you meet the 75-25? So it's not like you have to do 1, 2, 3 before you can do 4, 5, 6. It's in tandem.
But it's crucial that we meet 1, 2, and 3.
Yes. And if you'll look, towards the top, it's a non-highlighted item, percent of total expenditures. So right now, if you look at what we've actually spent, 131, almost 131,200. Our split is basically 70-30. But if we do everything in the proposed, our split, we're going to be right on target. In the categories 1, 2, 3, we're going to be at just a little bit over 75% and just under 25% in category 4.
All right, we'll keep working at 1, 2, and 3.
Keep working on those 1, 2, 3s.
Okay, if you have any ideas or suggestions, please don't hesitate to reach out to us.
You know, I still think there's a need out in the community for, you know, public disinfecting. That's a good one. More medical testing, PPE, those are great 1, 2, 3 kinds of categories.
All right. Thank you so much. All right. Now that we received that update and we're going to keep plugging along. Item number 16, considering take action regarding the burn ban and authorize the county judge a signatory. I think we removed the ban and in speaking with Mr. Lilly, I thought we were good, you know, from what he said. So is there any action needed on the burn ban? All right. No action taken at this time. We're up to item number 17, receive any updates on the strategic plan? Are there any updates?
I think we have a workshop on the 21st to go over some of that.
All right, all right. We have a workshop planned, October 21st, on the strategic plan. We have received that information. Thank you, Cherie. And look forward to that date to see how we can be more effective in whatever the plan has laid out before us. I think originally it was like a five-year plan, so I think we've done really well on many of the major items that were on there. So at this time, we're up to item number 18.
I move to adjourn.
All right. I second. We have a motion to adjourn. Is there any discussion? If not, all of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you all.